I'm going to call the Charter of the Commission to Order because I'm told that clock is slow and everybody else, clock says it's 6:32.
That's right.
So, we do not have a traditional flag, so we have a modern flag for our pledged allegiance, and Don will leave our flag over. Don, stand. And Rod, you want to leave?
That's pretty funny.
Okay.
To the flag.
...of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, Paul, you want to come get your eyes down? Thank you very much. And we will start with roll call. And, um, are you ready? Nola Judd?
Present.
Ken Hayes?
Present.
Ron Doe?
Here.
Sue Ford?
Here.
Ted Miller?
Present.
Norma Turner?
Here.
Thank you, Rod.
Here.
Steve Burke?
Here.
Selena Barkhouse?
Glenn Wiggins?
Connie Bovee?
Present. Harvard Christensen?
Rod Fleck?
Here.
Mike Dougherty?
Don Corson?
Here.
And for the record, Mike notified me he was at a meeting in Port Angeles would be a little late, and Glenn has a medical issue, so we don't know about the other two. Okay. We have an agenda in front of us. Is there, are there any modifications that you'd like to make? Okay, Connie and then Nola?
Yes, I would like to add county trust and reconvenance of, uh, reconvenance of county trust funds.
Well, the problem is, is that this is a special meeting, so we can't really add substantive issues of the agenda.
I just need to know what's happening to it.
I think we could do that under...
Really?
Well, if you're not asking for an action, so you could do it under...
Good of the order?
Good of the order, as a clarification of the statutes.
All right.
And I think, I suspect I know what the answer is, but...
So, you could ask your questions. You could ask a question under the good of the order. Okay, we'll do that. All right, Nola?
I'm not sure if this is appropriate from this point or not, Nola, but I was knowing that the prosecuting attorney had tabled a question that we'd give to them indefinitely. And I'm wondering when that, if they're going to appeal for when that can be, but I believe they're here today.
They're, they're not here today, but under the good of the order, if you raise that question, because then we might invite them to come to the Port Angeles hearing. Any other modifications or concerns about the agenda? Hearing none, is there consensus to approve the agenda as presented?
I'm assuming so.
Move by Maggie, seconded by Rod. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Okay, uh, we have Trish, you got updates on, of course?
Four minutes.
You're right. Somehow, without my glasses, I keep skipping lines. Okay, you did get your minutes for the forks hearing. It was a short meeting, and so the minutes are brief. Does anyone have any concerns or issues or additions to the minutes that have been presented to you? Maggie, do you have a question?
No, I was just going to say, since Steve is not here, do we have the results of the survey monkey?
Now, I'll have a discussion. I'll just happen, under the good of the order, I'm going to update what's going on in the questionnaire.
Move to a quick minutes.
Move by Connie?
Second.
Nola?
Seconded by Nola. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the minutes as presented?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Well, I was, that was a weak aye. Vote in favor of some minutes, yes, submitted?
Aye.
Thank you.
One abstained, two.
And Rod and Ken abstaining because they...
No, no, not Rod. I was, I appeared by telephone.
Rod, Rod.
You were there on the phone, so you can vote, so it's Rod and Ken are abstaining because
they did not attend. Okay, thank you. I'll put my glasses on first, so I won't miss the next line. Okay, so, the next line is correspondence.
The email from Stephanie Noblen, who announced the unity of the June first meeting. Email from Sylvia Hancock, supporting an appointed director of the Department of Community Development. Email from Ed Bowen regarding public conference at the June first hearing. Email from Scott K. Lang, supporting an appointed director of the Department of Community Development. And a memo from Norma, summarizing the presentation made by Steve, Ted Miller, uh, Steve Burke, Ted Miller, Selena Barkhouse, Nola Judd, and her at the Democratic Party Monthly Discussion.
Okay. Any questions to Trish? Thank you. Oh, see, that's right there on the agenda, update on the questionnaire. Uh, the good news is that it is going very well. All 33,700 were distributed. Uh, the last I checked in was Steve, is that the survey monkey has about 275, 280. For written questionnaires, we have a little over 500 returned. And so what Steve is going to do is that we're leaving the survey monkey open to the public, because basically, technically, people can only go in once to survey monkey. And during the discussion of the questionnaire, there was some question about how you validate the results. So, one things we're going to do is we're going to compare results. We're going to leave the survey monkey open to the public. Then Steve will create another questionnaire, which will be identical, that's not open to the public, and we will input the questionnaire responses that we get from questionnaires that have a return address or name attached to them. We will have a third questionnaire, which will be the same questionnaire, and we will input all the questionnaires that come in as anonymous. And, um, because there is some worry about, well, people send them a whole bunch. So then we'll have three different ways that we tally, and you can just compare across the three questionnaires, if they come out similar or different, and you can decide how to use that, but it's one way of having some level of validation. Uh, in terms of anonymous, some people said, "Well, you didn't ask for my name, that's why I didn't put it on." So, it's not that it's a malevolent thing, people didn't put their name on, there's all sorts of reasons why things are anonymous. So, um, in turn, we have really good news for you. We are going to request to put the data in, and fortunately, we have found a woman who needs to have community service hours. She is basically very adept at clerical things, has done data input, and is willing to input our data as part of her community service. So, we are working on that, and on the next hearing, I'll let you know if that's, I think it's going to work just fine, but we'll let you know. So, that's the update on the questionnaire. Uh, for the public, and if you finish your questionnaire tonight, that box over there, you can just drop it there, and it will save you a postage stamp. Um, and you've heard about how we're tallying, so if you want to put your name, I think this is not on. Is that better?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, I forgot to put it on.
Everybody did.
That, uh, if you want to put your name on it, that's fine. If for some reason you're uncomfortable putting your name on it, that's fine too, because you've heard, we are going to have it calculated in three different documents, so, um, any way you want to handle that questionnaire will work. The rules, we're going to move, and just one moment, to the public hearing. Welcome, Mr. Dougherty. Um, we, the, the rules for the public hearing is that the public testimony will be three minutes, and then there'll be five minutes. Last time we ate three, but with 15 commissioners, I think five is more reasonable than, don't you? To have, uh, we could ask you questions. You don't have to defend your position. You don't have to answer the questions. Most of the questions will be just clarifying, so, um, just so we can begin to have some discussion, rather than just, um, having to sit up here and listen and not communicate. So, uh, with that said, uh, and the other thing is, if you testify, you still get to submit a questionnaire, because in our assumption, then in three minutes, you can't cover all those topics. So, doing, doing a testimony does not prevent you from handing in your questionnaire. So, uh, let's see, Todd, can you grab for me the sign-up sheet from the podium, and you'll start it? And I thank you all for coming in on such a gorgeous night. I thought, who's going to come indoors on weather like this? So, it's very meaningful that you're here. So, the first person we're going to hear from is Candace Pratt.
Yeah. I'm glad you're first, you can check to see if the, if it works. I think so.
Citizen Candace Pratt. 93 North Oxford Way in Squim. I support placing the option, uh, and, good evening. I support placing the option for five county commissioners on the November ballot. Since I spoke to you in March, I've thought a great deal about how they should be elected, and if they should be part-time or full-time. I have now concluded that having five districts serving, served by five part-time commissioners will best serve the people of Quellum County. Each commissioner would be representing about 14,000 people in a defined locale, thus cutting down on miles traveled to constituents. And I imagine they've worked out their homes to be close to their constituents. And I strongly believe that the county DCD should be elected. The job description, basically the same as that of every other DCD in the nation, all appointed, is found in section 4.25 of the Charter. To illustrate my point, and for the record, here are some pertinent portions. The Director of the Department of Community Development shall administer, enforce, and advise the county commissioners. The Director shall prepare and present to the county commissioners for consideration of adoption by ordinance, with or without amendment, comprehensive, or other plans, and use, or development regulations for the use and physical development of the county. And the section goes on to say, "The duties and responsibilities set forth therein with respect to the Administrative Director of Department of Community Development shall apply to the elected Director." There it is, the official description, job description for the county DCD. Now, Commissioner McIntyre has said that there's a significant body of law that says one elected official may not tell another elected official what to do, and Jim has since assured me that my quote is correct. I submit, as I did in March, that that represents astonishing dysfunction for our county governance. Please tell me how the responsibilities of DCD will be carried out if the elected official is unwilling to insist the DCD do the job as written in the Charter. I submit it is hubris to believe that one of the most important offices in local government can be filled with an individual elected without having credentials required to carry out the duties of the job. It is time for the citizens of Quellum County to have another opportunity to acknowledge that they are not being served responsibly by having an elected DCD. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, and now we can have questions from the panel here.
Everybody has a question.
Okay, Rod?
Maybe I misunderstood. I thought in your first sentence, you said that they should be elected, but your point is that they should be appointed.
You're absolutely right.
I just was wondering if I heard it correctly.
And that's a bit of dysfunction, I'm sorry.
And in the record, Rod will show that you were absolutely right.
So, your position is that the DCD should be appointed, is that correct?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Um, I want to ask a question on your five commissioners and five districts. Did you go the next step, should those commissioners be elected by district or county wide?
By district.
By district only?
Mm-hmm.
By primary and general?
Yes.
Thank you, okay.
Just makes logical sense to me.
Any other? Nola?
Is she proposing that we have a redistricting convention, so that there are five districts?
You can ask a question to Candace.
That, yes, that would make sense also.
Maggie?
You said something about having the county commissioners work at home. How would, how would that work?
Uh, well, they'd be close to their constituents. They'd be working out of a central location in Port Angeles if they're representing, um, Forks or Squim. They'd be, assuming they're living in the, they have to be living where they're in the district where they're elected. I say they have to be, it just makes sense, but maybe that would be kind of, what would be written?
Rod?
Well, you suggested that they would be part-time, but what would the cost be of redistricting in the five, uh, districts? And I don't know if you know, but I'm just raising that in terms of a cost.
Don is going to speak that, because he's been involved in...
Okay. I had the opportunity with Gene Under to be one of the districting marshals. Did Trish accept the right term?
Master.
Districting master? Who? Anyway, uh, the process was pretty straightforward. There was a contract for that, that was about $10,000, to look at, uh, all of the demographic information, all the population information, by, uh, by not only district, but also by election precinct. I think it might be helpful, if we pursue this, to also look at the role of the redistricting process, so that it was, it's by definition of, of, of population or other geographic kinds of things, because the more it's, uh, described, the easier it is for that, that marshal to be able to do that work, uh, very objectively.
Okay. Other question? Hearing none, thank you, Candace. And the next person that has signed up is Pat Johansson.
Good evening, and I must, Pat Johansson, 692 Alstons Road in Squim. I must thank you all for the time you are committing to this project. It, uh, the more I understand about it, or the less I understand. So, I, I welcome the input of your, your intellect and your commitment to this community. I am only going to make a very brief point, I hope it will be brief. Uh, those of us who were here earlier for the leaked presentation by Lindsay and the evolution of constitutional powers and local power and state power, one of the things he mentioned, and I don't think there was anybody that disagreed, was that the concept of diffusion of power from the state to the local level, because he did address our concerns about the local government and the issues that you all were addressing. And the idea of multiple elected officials, which again, diffuses the power and keeps us from having cronyism and much of other things. I just want to bring to you a concern that I have. I have lived in five states, I have worked in local government in most of those states, either as an elected official, as a volunteer, as a staff member, and I find the interaction that we have in this county, and I unfortunately have not been able to do the research elsewhere, between the commissioners and the other elected positions, a little confusing to me and of some concern. Having stood for election myself, once you get yourself elected, you have a responsibility to the people in your community to meet your obligations as an elected official, and that responsibility should be independent of anybody else. So, my short-term, I mean, my quick and dirty comment is, no responsibility without authority. And that is the situation we find with our elected officials vis-à-vis our county commissioners. We have elected officials who have huge responsibility and precious little authority. And I would appreciate if you, as you move forward in looking at the issues in this county, that you look at that as a real significant concern. We've had some problems locally just recently, but that's not the point. The point is that these people are subject to other elected officials and to be appointed an administrator, and they should have independence.
Thank you. Um, want to stand up there, Pat, in case somebody has some questions for you? Does anyone have a question? Okay, Rod, you have a question?
Well, I'm, I'm just kind of curious, because, uh, no responsibility without authority implies that the county commissioners really don't have much in the way of authority, but as I read the Charter, they pass the budget, they pass ordinances, um, they have a bully pulpit every Tuesday, whether we want them to or not, uh, and they have the ability to , to votes to direct the administrator to do things. So, so where do you see the county...
I'm, I'm sorry if I didn't make myself clear, Rod. I am talking about the other elected officials. DCD, um, uh, whatever.
Treasure.
The other, uh, elected officials that serve within the county administration. If I didn't make that clear, I apologize. But that is the situation, and for those of us who have worked in the broader world, and I'm sure most people have, I have been in situations where I have responsibility with no authority, and it is not a successful way to work.
Other questions for Pat? Do you have any suggestions what that would look like on the ground?
You know, I don't. I think that there is, um, this is a community that has, for a number of reasons, tends to empower executives. In contrast, I mean, I look at the port, I look at the EDC, I look at the county, um, there, there is a, seems to be a working tradition there. Um, I find, I find the fact that our, uh, county executive, um, has, you know, has oversight over elected officials, and I think that's something you should at least look at, to see if you're comfortable with that. Um, and I don't know what the alternative is. It could be, um, a, a broader-based selection and evaluation of, uh, the county executive. It could be the ability to shape and form hiring and firing regulations within each department, and budgets, have more control over individual budgets. Uh, I, I, I don't have that solution. That's what you guys have been paying all that money for.
Are you, are you referring to the county administrator when you say county executive?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Is there another one? I mean, no?
I'm wondering, when you talk about having authority, is that something that needs to be spelled out in the Charter?
Um, I think the structure, the interactive structure of the elected officials should be studied, so that's my point. I, I don't know that it's necessarily dysfunctional at this point, but I would guess that the potential for its being dysfunctional is, is very high. Two commissioners may, can make almost every decision that impacts the county and its budget, and its hiring and firing policies, and so forth and so on. And yet, these other elected officials spend their time, go forward, meet with the people, spend their money, get themselves elected, and then it appears to me that our particular structure neuters these people in terms of the, uh, authority that they have. And I'm just, I'm asking you to look at it. I could well be wrong, but I would like you to look at it.
Any other questions for Pat?
No, my question is asked.
Um, Mike?
So, one management tool in some corporate world there is our, like, a 360-degree review, so employees, annual, or three years, whatever, a review of the executives, commissioners, administrator, that, that's been suggested by some citizens. And over a period of time, the slip of county executive happens fairly regularly in conversations, and very carefully, the Board of Freeholders selected the term administrative coordinator. Later, it was changed to county administrator, and then people slip when they say, "Well, it's a county executive." Not true, there's never been a separation of power in the county between executive...
I have, yeah, that's right. Those words mean something.
They, they should, but, you know, sometimes they get a little blurred, but, um, at least two people have asked me about this 360-degree valuation, so elected officials, maybe even employees, could evaluate the leadership team, commissioners, and county administrator periodically. I have not yet an opinion on that.
Well, something like that makes sense. I mean, these are big budgets, these are our major departments, we must think enough of them to have them independently elected. If that's the case, they should be empowered in some way, either through, um, uh, no, I don't, um, I think you understand where I'm coming from. The county administrator, if I get it right, that's it? Okay. Uh, has an obligation, should have an obligation to every elected official, or the level of, uh, this process should differentiate between the responsibilities of the elected officials versus the responsibilities of the commissioners. And I don't think, from my perspective, that that's well, well drawn.
Thank you, Pat. I, we've actually used up our five minutes of the show. Thank you.
It happens.
Thank you. Okay. The next presenter is Carol Hall.
My name is Carol Hall, and I live at 240 Brittany, here in Squim. Uh, I'm interested in all of these, I just wanted to talk about one very briefly, and then one, uh, I need to, I at least have some questions that I'd like to pose. Uh, the, overall, I really think this is wonderful, that you have gone to the trouble to put this out in the community. My hope is that you work with PBN and other sources of news in our community, so people can have some pros and cons on these. I've hear very well-educated people look at this and say, "Well, I have to know more." I, I don't know if I could say yes or no on this. But please think in terms of reaching out to getting the pros and con arguments. You're, I looked at your website today, it's really good, that's one place, but maybe you could get the PBN to come in on this and run, you know, some editorials or just some articles that present this question with some legitimate arguments on both sides, so people will have that information. Okay, the thing that I, struck me was, um, the grand jury suggestion for Quellum County. I was fortunate enough to be able to serve in the grand jury in California, in the county of Sacramento, and this was just after I retired from teaching AP Government, and I was very anxious to get in there and do something, to be part of, of the action in our county. Uh, it was an extraordinary experience. I was working 20 hours a week, uh, it's a large, a large county, uh, and it was a very rewarding experience, and then I really came out of it feeling like democracy really works here, folks. Uh, we had a tremendous amount of power and a tremendous amount of guidance. Uh, and I went in today, and it's open to all of you, I just put in California Grand Jury, and up popped up, you know, some websites, and one, in, uh, 2014, they published a wonderful handbook, it's about 70 pages long, giving the history of grand juries in the United States, giving the history of it in California. All counties in California have working grand juries. It is probably the most developed grand jury system in the United States. And I'm sure you, most of you know these things, but, uh, the grand jury really is to do criminal indictments of certain types, depending on the state, depending on the county. Uh, they also have a second function of being a watchdog over local government. And I was interested, and as I read this report, to find out, there's only seven states right now that use a grand jury as that watchdog function of looking over, uh, the, and Sacramento is one. We went in and we looked at the prisons, and we went in and we looked at the school districts that you can put in and looked at all the governing bodies where there were elected officials, uh, in the county. It was quite extensive.
So, Carol, I don't want to interrupt, but can you kind of round it out? Give us some conclusions?
Oh, okay. Okay. Uh, I have a lot of questions about our county, a rural county, a small county, uh, doing a grand jury. Mainly because one of the issues is that they cannot be fishing expeditions, looking for things to, to, to complain about, that, uh, after being and serving in one, I realized that the legal guidance that we needed was expensive. We had to have a judge assigned to us, we had full access to the district attorney and some of the prosecutors, it was, it was an amazing amount of resources.
Can you add your own questions for us, please?
Yeah. I want you to really look at the grand jury system and see if we need it. I have not heard of any, uh, situation here in the county that would demand that, that I, that I've seen, after serving in a grand jury for a year, so... seen after serving in a grand jury for a year. And I'm going to do some more research and come back to you about this one, okay?
And feel free to send us letters and come back again.
Okay.
So, but stay at the podium, because we have our five minutes of questions. So, Sue?
Did you say that was a state grand jury or a county?
Yeah, it's a county grand jury.
Okay.
Right. And in California, the state actually outlines that every county should have a grand jury. Really is specific about how to organize, how you go about getting served, to serve on one. It's a really interesting process. Didn't limit our freedom to do what we needed to do, but it was a legitimizing process. So we had people who were really dedicated to the common good, to the good of the county, and what we were doing, not on their own agendas, which was really important in this very important function.
Ron?
Yeah, I get a little confused on this grand jury concept. You're talking about a citizen's grand jury that's not instituted by the district attorney or the prosecuting attorney as prescribed by Washington law.
It is different here in Washington. You're absolutely right. In Washington, it is the court system here, not actually the prosecutor or the district attorney. It is the court, superior court system, that calls a grand jury into action of its citizens for specific tasks.
And Nola?
From the reading that I've been doing on it in the RCWs, I thought that Washington state really limited the grand jury function to criminal only. Is that your understanding, or...
I'm going to have to look at that a little harder. I think they are limited to just criminal in here. And I saw the greater good, actually, was, you know, in the larger picture, but... Where did you look at?
In California, since it is a state, a top-down-driven system, so that all the counties have it, does the money come with the mandate, or do the counties have to fund it?
Absolutely not.
Thank you.
The counties have to fund this. And I'm sure that it was costing the county of Sacramento $65,000 to $100,000 a year to fund what we were doing. And again, that's a huge county, but territorially, it's not. It's small compared to Clown County. And a grand jury that services the whole county, that would be daunting.
Other questions for Carol? Thank you. Feel free to send us additional questions. Okay, the next person up is Judith Parker.
I'm Judith Parker, 828 Bay House Court in Swim. I want to express appreciation that this body has decided to put on our list the DCD being appointed, or, excuse me, being appointed rather than elected. My understanding is that just about almost all of the prior directors of community development wanted this position appointed. They wanted it to be a professional with a resume that could be vetted, and help with human resources and a frequent with commissioners, not someone who had been through the hardship could be swayed by money or by political means. We have just had problems in that department, in that area, where the director virtually forced us to elect her out. So I just want to express gratitude that this issue, number seven, the appointment of the director of community development, is on the list. I also have a question on number eight. The mechanism, should a mechanism be created which would allow the community to investigate and independently determine whether a county public official has disobeyed or ignored the law? I want to... I guess I have a question for you, as to do you have an idea what the mechanism is? This is written in such a way, I mean, one could worry about witch hunts. I mean, I just am not sure what your... My question comes down to, what mechanism are you thinking of?
The question, basically, you're right, is vague?
Yes.
Because at the time, there was some discussion around a grand jury. There was another subcommittee that had a different approach. There were others who were looking into an ombudsman program. So there's a variety of ways. So we were just asking the public, do you want some development of something for the public to be able to file a complaint? So there is nothing, and it is waiting.
Nani Hall at 151 McQuarrie Trail in Swim. Speaker Johansson had brought up the issue of elected officials in connection with discussing the director of community development. And all of her remarks were concerning elected officials and not just the director of community development. And that really tracks with my thinking of why this obsession with this one elected office, when it seems appropriate that this body review all elected offices, and do so in conjunction with, I don't know what you want to call it, a organizing principle, an overarching paradigm or concept for how you make the decision between elected versus appointed? Because right now, I've heard the testimony in several of these forums, and it always comes out, "Oh, my opinion, your opinion, can an elected official be swayed by campaign donations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?" So what I propose is that the organizing principle ought to be those executives, county executives, with substantial policy-writing authority need to be elected because they have considerable power. They write the policy. Now, somebody might say, "Well, wait, 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 wait. The commissioners actually approve the policy." But when you look at it and you say, "The commissioners, they just have an opportunity for an up or down vote. And if it's down, they maybe write some comments of fix this, change this, make this better." But it's still the official who has the power of the actual wording. And by the way, if there's politics involved, or if there's personality differences amongst the commissioners, that power divulged to that particular executive becomes even greater and has pretty much, almost, almost a carte blanche on what the policy is. We talk about director of community development, substantial policy-writing authority. Look at the marijuana thing. Look at some of the issues that revolve around zoning. Yes, the office can be abused, but that's pretty much a general problem. But we look at some of the others, and say, "Well, assessor, auditor, probably elected, treasurer..." I tend to say that's an appointed position, just like their chief engineer. I don't want the chief engineer writing policy. I want the chief engineer following policy. I want the chief engineer implementing policy. I want him following the standards that have been well-established as engineering practice. And send him to the treasurer. I want the treasurer to be somebody that's following established financial practices and procedures. And my time's up. But you can see my point. I believe King County appoints the treasurer. And I will defer, since I think I've made my point. I really wish that... My wish would be that all of those elected officials, other than the ones prescribed by state law, since it's a prosecutor, be considered and not just the director of community development.
There's some questions? Ron?
I'm just curious, sir. By any chance, were you here when that first went on the ballot, the issue of the DCD? Because it's been fascinating to hear people talk about specific skill sets and no discussion about the issue of policy enforcement and power.
Was that 16 years ago?
It was a while ago.
Yeah, no.
I was much younger then.
I was not. I was still a federal employee with lots of responsibility and no authority.
Well, not much different from a city employee. I think you bring up a really good point about the issue of policy. I would also encourage you to go back and maybe poll, or if we can, the New York Times article, with a discussion about the issue of enforcement and the DCD director and the issue of enforcement. And I would even go further and say, read real close attention as to who the DCD did not report to in the discussions that occurred during those hearings, because it was quite fascinating, the conversations that came out during the county officials' discussions that seemed to have been lost and forgotten in history somewhere.
And that's quite interesting, because if there's even, if there's power of enforcement as well, that again requires a greater accountability, and I would argue that accountability should lie with the voters and not as an appointee or through some advertising HR selection process.
Some would argue that's why we elect a sheriff.
Other comments? Mike?
So just quickly, so obviously, this is left from the populist era around statehood in Washington. So if you look at the state, you have a public lands commissioner, you have a public education superintendent, you have an insurance commissioner. Those are obviously, they'd be appointed in the corporate world and a modern government carries over to the county. So in '53, I think it was, the state decided you could have a home rule charter movement. King County had promoted it. And Clown was the second county to get into this academic study of government. So there's this opportunity to do what you said. If you look at some of the other counties, for instance, there's been a finance department or comptroller created, as an example you brought up. So it could be done, it's just so far, this group of charter review commissioners has not decided to do that sort of an academic study, but it could be done.
Yeah, and that's just my request and recommendation tonight. I think there... The public's probably, who is out there that is not as well-informed of the past history, is probably asking the same question.
Well, the other thing that happens in the past history is it used to be the assessor, the auditor, the treasurer were all partisan offices. And at the charter review, that switched those to nonpartisan. They were switched to nonpartisan because they were not policymakers and left the commissioners as partisan because they are policymakers and they believe the partisan label gives you some vague sense of what the policy may or may not be. That was sort of what floated around. There was one time when the charter recommended combining the treasurer and the auditor into an office of finance with an appointed director that would have financial background, and that was voted down. So there have been a variety of discussions around some of these issues.
In the current situation, the director of community development is writing policy to be submitted for, to the commissioners for an up and down vote. If that is not reflect the intent of the charter, then that's a separate problem to be fixed. If the policy-writing authority is to solely lie with the commissioners, then they likely have to have the appropriate staff, or the county administrator would have to have appropriate staff to do that writing, to take it away from the individual departments. But it's appears to me that the departments are writing policy.
I'm fascinated by this conversation. I was sure where it's going, but in my mind, policymaking and policy-writing aren't the same thing. I mean, in fact, matter of fact, I can, you know, department heads do write the policies for approval, review and approval by the policymakers, but that, to me, they're two separate things, you know? And the central legislative authority, in this case, the Board of County Commissioners, or the city council, or in any level of government in this country, you know, it's the upper-level electeds who actually craft the policies based on their beliefs, their constituency or whatever, or sometimes because things are handed down, which is the case in this county with the marijuana law. And so I don't see that as quite the same thing. Even though the DCD director is currently working on that, she didn't create the policy. You know, it wasn't... So I just don't understand how that fits in the same mold as...
It's a bit of a misperception, because the writer always has a certain amount of policymaking ability. Like I said, when it gets, by the time it gets to the commissioners, you're looking at an up or down vote. And they basically, if they vote down, they can't really rewrite the policy. They may say, "Fix this," or "Do this different," but there is, in the specific language, a policymaking by default, de facto, whatever you want to call it.
Let's get right back to the issue of responsibility with no authority. I don't think we're fixing it.
Well, actually, our commission's run out of our five minutes of questioning time, so thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
And next on the list, I have Mr. Pilling.
Good evening. Dick Pilling, 72, Mount Pleasant Lake Lane, Los Angeles. And I'm going to speak in favor of having our director of Department of Community Development remain as an elected physician. There for one wild instant, I thought, "Candy's crap, I'm on the same side." My hands are still shaking. We either like them, and I like elections, I like local control, I like keeping the control of our elected positions as local as possible. Appointment would probably become after a time-consuming and an expensive recruitment process that would bring somebody probably from out of the area, unfamiliar with our situation, our county, our history, to attempt to lead. We see this frequently when we recruit city managers. I've been in Los Angeles for a while, I've seen a whole bunch of city managers come and go. They come from out of the area, they stay for a while, and they move on, just like a revolving chair. I think that local control is best, and we should have somebody from us governing us. I think that, moving on, I think that one of the issues I've heard a lot about is coordinate rather than cooperate with other government entities. There's just a couple letters difference between them, but a whole bunch of difference in practice. And I can give you an example. Coordination is something that you see the Seahawks offensive line do. Everybody's got a job, they work together, and they move the ball forward. Cooperate is usually what happens when a policeman pulls you over and asks for your driver's license and registration. You certainly cooperate with him, but there's certainly an air of coercion about it. So, again, I like local control, and I think that the best way to do that is to allow our entities here to coordinate rather than merely accede to wishes of others. Five commissioners instead of three. You know, we've managed quite well with three for many years. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. Electric commissioners by district. You know, I can see advantages either way, but again, I default to local control. If I've got to dance to the tune, I want to be able to choose some of the music. Remain in charter control, charter county, or join the other 32 counties and subject ourselves to the whims of Olympia. Again, I like local control. Convene charter review commissioners every four years or every eight years. Go for four, after all. Things change really fast, and I want our county grand jury. I guess I've used my voice before my three minutes is up, so I would be...
You're down to 15 seconds.
Wow. Local control. Keep control in the hands of people.
Okay. Some questions for Mr. Pilling? Thank you for your time. And next, we have Jim Pickett.
I'm Jim Pickett. I live at 878 North Kendall Road in the county. I want to thank you for serving. I was fortunate enough to be up there with you last year and know how much time you spend and how much effort you spend, regardless of which side you're on. I do appreciate that, and I hope, I hope the citizens of the county can have some understanding of how much time and effort you do in your respective way of doing what you're supposed to be doing. I copy some of the earlier comments about if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I think, I think one of the things I experienced was, there seemed to be a tendency sometime for the commissioners to think they have to do something to demonstrate that they're doing something. And if the commission charter review didn't have any changes, I would respect that as much if you have 12 to submit. Having said that, the one point I would like to make is, I urge you to sincerely apply the financial implications of any charter review, any charter suggestion, change you suggest, and how it's going to impact and what it's going to cost, whether it's the number of commissioners. Don't just go with, well, we'll work it out or meeting every four years instead of eight, which I don't think is necessary. You're talking about and they always say, well, the county just adjusts their time and doesn't take any more effort out of the county staff to host those people and do that. Well, if they're busy now and you take their time away to do something else, you're not you're not being fair to yourself. So please apply and come up with the amount of money it's going to cost on any of these things that you submit to the public and let the public know what that amount is. Your best guess estimate, either a swag or based on some professional advice from someone who does that. I again, thank you and good luck.
Mr. Pickett, you want to wait in case someone has a question to ask you? You want to wait, Jim, in case someone has a question?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, is there anybody wants to ask Mr. Pickett a question?
No.
So where would the financial analysis come? Would that be part of what's put on the ballot or is that an additional piece of information?
I think it's easy for people to read something and vote for it and not have any sense of really what it's going to cost them as taxpayers. And we all face that regardless of what kind of election. And I just, I would think it's your responsibility to come up with your best guesstimate of what it's really going to cost to have 10 commissioners instead of two or five instead of three. And that's probably the best example on here of, that's an important thing. And you'll say cost is no objective or it's not important, but I think it is.
Any other comments from the commissions? Thank you. And the last person on the list is Jerry Sin and after Mr. Sin speaks, if there's someone who has not signed up and wishes to speak, we'll have room for that.
Before I start, I had eye surgery this week and I don't see very well out of any of the glasses I have.
I've been there, done that.
My name is Gerald Sin. I'm at 46 Quarter Horse Lanes in Washington. Actually, I'm going to change what I was going to go into here. I've heard more common sense than I have in a long time and I guess I want to support that. The charter has served us very well actually since its inception. And our structure, as it has evolved, has done a pretty good job considering one of the best run, I think, counties in the state. We're solvent, we don't have any major disasters facing us. And there's always been a lot of difference between commissioners and the staff and those sort of things, but we seem to always work those out. So I guess the principle I heard coming out of this is don't try to change things for the sake of change or to use a not off as an example for the need to change. I really agree with that concept. On a specific basis, kind of along with that principle, I'd recommend that we maintain a three commissioner structure. It's been a very effective, looking back at our track record, it's efficient. We're not a large county, we're under 80,000 people, we don't need a huge bureaucracy and it's much more transparent. Very little goes on that you can't figure out who's doing what and I kind of like that. You can't hide behind a larger majority. Secondly, I believe the county administrative position should stay as it is. A number of budget issues I've heard raised over the last weeks, when I went in and read the charter and the budget section on the charter, there's a whole process in there of how the budget should be developed and approved. And there's a role for every elected official in that. So if we're not following the procedure properly, then let's fix it, let's fix that problem. If people aren't being invited into the process that shouldn't be in the process, let's invite them in. But I don't think you totally disrupt the structure to try to fix what might be a procedural or a process problem. So I would really look into that piece of it. And then thirdly, I believe the ECD for a number of the reasons mentioned just in the last couple of speakers should remain elected. It's fairly new in that condition and we just had a turnover in the representative that we voted in to do that job. And I think we got to let that process run. We don't want to fix differences in ideology or differences in personalities or breakdowns of procedure by just going after structural change because it never works. So I think that we need to be, we need to be patient with some of the things we introduce to make sure that they do work or they're not working before we just jump in to change those.
So if you can wrap up your comments.
That's it.
Oh, okay. Do we have some questions from the charter?
Ron, you would say not even put that issue about the ECD out to the county to vote on, is that right?
Well, it's been up for a vote, I think, before, so, you know, I mean, it seems like we keep, we don't like the answer that people keep giving us. So we keep going back and re-asking the question. It's very clear that the voters don't see it as a problem and I think we ought to listen to them.
Other members of the commission have a question? Okay, Mike?
I'm just curious if you read the investigator's report regarding ECD? If you have any comment on the allegations in the report versus following the law?
Well, that if, I think you're referring to the previous ECD director.
That's right.
I really only know the things I read in the paper and a few other things, pieces of it, but I'm not an expert in that. But here again, if somebody's not performing their job properly, that's a different issue than saying the way they got into that job's the problem. And that's what I'm saying. I mean, if we have procedural problems, if you have personal problems with personnel, excellent. Using the tools that are available to you to do it. But my experience in business and business planning and budgeting, I've done years of that work, is that if you start changing structure to try to fix your problems, you're not going to fix your problems. You may think of it in structural terms, but you have to look at your procedures and your processes and how you design the system to look for your fixes. And to me, we've got the carceral works. I think we're trying to do a structural, I call that a structural change, to fix what might be a personal problem or a lack of procedural, following procedure properly. And the budget, I think, is a great example, you know, I read the charter on budgeting and it seems to be like every elected official has a definite role in that process. And I think the commissioners have an obligation to involve them in that process. And if that isn't happening, that's, you don't solve that by, you know, throwing out the budget or budgeting process.
Ken?
So am I hearing that through the history of the charter, it's been an ever evolving document and guiding document? Are you saying that after many reviews and many changes, we are now arrived at the perfect synthesis of all that it should be? And we should never change it?
Oh heavens, no, that would be, that would kind of be a definition of insanity probably. No, what I'm saying is in over the years, we've managed to develop by charter, an evolving charter that's 22 pages long. You can actually read it and pretty much understand everything in it. You may not know all the history of it, but it's all there. So making that more complex, more involved, more bureaucracy around it, this is going to make better necessarily. And that's what I'm saying. I think you have to be very judicial in the changes we make. And I like that Jim Pickett, I think, hit it on the head. If you came up with no recommendations, that doesn't mean you failed. And I think we got to be careful that we think we have to do things when there is a necessary reason.
Well, I guess my, my, asking my question is, I feel like we've been doing that and working pretty hard at it. And I feel like I'm hearing that maybe some think what we're considering is a waste of time.
Well, don't take my comments as a criticism of you. It's a criticism of the issues and some of the recommendations that are coming out. I'm not criticizing the commissioners. I, you know, I don't regret you, what you're doing, it's a lot of work. So it's not a criticism of the commission. It's a criticism of the issues that are arising and some of the recommended solutions and looking at the reasons for those issues coming up at all. And that's what I'm referring to, Ken. It's not, it's not what you guys, you're trying to deliberate it and sort that out. And hopefully my input would be a piece of your thinking when you deliberate it.
Thank you. Anybody else from the commission? Any question? Okay. Thank you then. Jerry is the last person that signed up. Anybody else who wants to testify is welcome to. What I'm going to do is put this sign up sheet out there because historically I've not done a very good job of getting your addresses, right? So just come up as you will to the podium and sign in with your name and your address. And we'll just take a one minute standup break while those who want to testify can go put their name on the sheet and then we'll start again. Yeah, you don't have to answer your standup, some people like to.
He's never said his last name.
And we have another very important question. I know, I know. Okay, let's see. I think we're waiting for two commissioners to return, so.
No, I'm not saying anybody, but I have to leave. I waited for it till the future, but maybe we create a process that if you didn't sign up at the start, your time is shorter. No, 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 I mean, that's not uncommon to do.
What we will do is we continue here, we have three minutes, we will reduce the commissioner question times to three minutes. Okay? So Noah, should we turn a minute? I think we'll just go ahead and start. If that, do you want to wait for Noah or? Oh, there she is. Okay, we're getting ready to start, Noah. Okay, so we have Susan.
Yes, I'm Susan Olens in 398 Dungeness Meadows out in the county. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but I'm realizing in looking at this, which I filled in and mailed in, I was confused about one question, even though I had no response to it. And that's number four, should elected county officials, county administrator or charter exempt employees be allowed to serve as a member of the charter review commission? And first I'd like to ask for a clarification. I'm not sure what charter exempt employees that applies to.
Okay, Mike, you want to answer that one?
Well, it's decided by the charter, the board of three old way back when, that each elected official, would have one official under them, uses a deputy that would be exempt from charter provision. There's a lot of specifics to that, but each treasurer has one person they can appoint as exempt.
Which means they can serve.
Well, they're, so they're usually not, for example, they're usually not under parts of the county personnel system. There's more latitude for the elected official to pick one person. It's not that easy, but so it's not going to require them to go through all of the formalities of the HR system to select a person to be their deputy. There was a feeling to you in that one position, you could have the right to appoint one person under you.
Okay, I'm still a little confused about how that relates to the charter review, but I can still make my statement, which is.
Yeah, please do.
I don't believe that elected county officials or the county administrator should serve on the charter review commission. I actually don't believe that any elected officials at all should serve on the charter review commission. I like the idea of retired elected officials serving on the charter review commission, or this commission. But I, there's been no discussion of that particular question and since it's on here and it's something you're considering, I wanted to just give some, a statement about it.
Anything else?
No.
All right. Questions from the?
I just wanted to make sure I understood your last comment. I think you said you don't think any elected officials, currently elected officials in a within the county should serve on the charter review.
That's, that's my thinking, yes.
Any other questions for Susan? Thank you.
Thank you.
We hope you answered your questions.
I'm a little confused still, but I guess there'll be more clarity once it's all printed.
All right, we'll try. Okay, Paula Barnes?
I too wasn't going to speak because you've heard from me before, but I feel compelled to and my husband would say he's not surprised. For those who think the ECD should remain in elected position, remember that every other county and city in the nation appoints its ECD. And then I would encourage you to read in full the investigator's report of the previous ECD. But moving on from that, if you decide to recommend five county commissioners instead of three, I would assume the reason would be to diffuse the considerable power that's afforded now to just two people being the majority of the commission of three. And I assume you'd first study whether the county's budget could absorb the added cost without cutting services. So if you do make this recommendation, please carefully think through how five commissioners would be selected and to whom they'd be accountable. A system where commissioners are elected exclusively by the voters in his or her district would pretty readily create a balkanized county where Commissioner A doesn't need to know anything about or doesn't even care anything about the issues in District B or District C. With the electoral process structured as it is now, the two finalists for the job of county commissioner are vetted and selected by the voters in their district in the primary election. Then in the general election, all of the voters in the county have the opportunity and the right to select a successful commissioner candidate from the finalists who were chosen by the voters in the district. This commissioner, even though he or she lives in a particular district, will after all, be taking actions and making decisions on behalf of the whole county on a regular basis. So to be explicit, if you're going to move forward with that recommendation for five instead of three, please do your best to require future county commissioners to maintain a countywide view by making them accountable to all the voters in the county, by needing to earn the votes of all the voters in the county. And just as an example, this could be done by retaining the three existing districts and the existing electoral process for selecting the commissioners in those districts and adding two additional commissioners whose district is essentially. adding two additional commissioners whose district is essentially the entire county, and they're elected in both the primary and the general election at large, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Thank you. I've got my glasses on, let's see. David Kirkpatrick?
Kilpatrick.
Kilpatrick, okay, thank you.
On the question of CDC, I support a non-elected position on that. My view is that every elected official comes with a political power base. Every elected official has some power. Other than that, it falls under the main work of the county commissioners. And I don't think that the planning should be separated from the county commissioners. I feel like the essence of their job is thinking about the future of the county, which is planning. On the numbers of county commissioners, I have not heard any good reasoning to abandon the three commissioners going to anything larger. I would posit on the basis of the expense, if you do go to anything larger, I like the at-large approach, but you were maintaining three or four districts at a time.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Kilpatrick? Thank you. Rod, you scared them into questioning. Okay, the next is Mark Ozias.
Good evening, Mark Ozias, 1605 Happy Valley Road. And I too would like to thank you for your service on the Charter Review Commission. This is a really fascinating exercise in democracy, and I really appreciate all of the time that you all have put into this. I would like to support the concept of an appointed Director of Community Development. There's obviously been a lot of discussion about that, so I'm just going to say that I believe that that's important, because that position requires a very high level of professional skill and knowledge in order to be successful and effective. And I think that that skill set is best arrived at by a traditional hiring process. And in addition to making that statement, I would just like to echo Susan Olin's interest in question number four on the survey having to do with whether elected officials should serve on the Charter Review Commission. And I really, I'm mostly just curious as to, since there's been so little discussion about that, or at least public discussion about that, is there a reason why that came up, or if there's any? I'd like to hear a little bit more about that, although I realize we're tight on time right now, so this may not be the best time.
Well, actually, while you finish your statement, and then we'll ask that question to the commission.
I'm done.
Oh, you're done already? You used three minutes. Okay, Ron.
Yeah, I want us not to split hairs here, but when you say county officials, are you also including city officials in that, like city council people? I mean, I don't know, and that's.
Well, no, I'm, I'm, I would be more personally interested in county officials as opposed to city-elected officials, but my curiosity is more, where did that question come from? What discussion led to, what discussion led to this concept of being on the questionnaire?
I don't, I can't answer a question. I just tell you that in the past, we have had elected officials, in fact, one of the commissions was chaired by an elected official and it worked just fine. But there were some concerns came out of the committee. Connie?
It's felt by a lot of people, excuse me, it's felt by a lot of people that this charter should be by the citizens of the community, not by the elected officials. If you have an elected official making a position on any of the articles that are in here that would directly affect their job, they need to recuse themselves. If they recuse themselves, then you no longer have an odd number, you have an even number, which does not serve well the commission or the community. And you also would not want an elected person making any kind of comment that could affect their job or the job of someone else that's in that charter that they have to work with. That's where that came from.
Thank you.
Along the way, was there was some concern that in those situations, they would come with hidden agendas, rather than having a completely open mind and listening to the public at these hearings?
Great, thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you. And the last person I have along the list is Judy Larson.
Judy Larson, 1070 West Pebble Verde Loop. I will be uncharacteristically succinct, and first of all, just thanking you all for your efforts on our behalf. And then also noting that I personally do think that it's very good that you came up with this survey, having an opportunity for the public to not only do this in writing, but on the monkey survey for the people who do things by internet. And also having these public hearings, I know, again, all the considerable time and effort that you've been spending on our behalf, and I thank you for that. I do think that it's important that there is a recognition, and it does appear that there has been, by bringing back these as possible items that may be considered for the electorate, that, as Paula Barnes very articulate, very well articulated, and many others have also stated, I do think it's important that we have an appointed DCD, a professional DCD person. And I think also the idea of the concept of having five commissioners to make it so there's more diversity of opinion and better discussions, and having more opportunity for input from all parts of our entire county, that it is very important to do that. I think the concept of having the three districts as they are, and all finally elected by general election, not by district, and then at-large for two candidates would be a good approach. Those are my positions, and again, thank you for this opportunity.
Ah, are there questions from the commissioners? Thank you. And so is there anybody in the audience that would like to make a statement that didn't sign up on either sheet? Because there is this sign-up sheet still left on the podium for any additional comments. So one last call, if somebody wants to make any comments. Well, hearing none, then I will close the public hearing. And thank you for coming, and the only thing left on our agenda is for the good of the order, and there's a couple of things we said we were going to address for the good of the order. Connie, you had a question to ask?
Yes, there's a question I want to find out, where we are on sending to the commissioners the subject group being trust lands.
We have not had that discussion. We are not going to tell our regular meeting in July.
On May 4th, we took action, let move to accept the committee's recommendation dated 4/27. It was attached, both a seconded and a motion carried. And the motion was to send to the county commissioners a request that the group, because of the complexity of this idea, the Charter Review Commission recommends that the county commissioners establish a county trust lands advisory committee within three months, compulsive individuals with the necessary expertise to make recommendations addressing the issue of rate conveyance and complete its work within 13 months from its establishment date. This group will examine the following, the history, issues, benefits, challenges, and advantages of reconveyance of county lands to Clowen County, and it found to be in its best interest to recommend such action, as may be required to effect this change in the management of its property. No, my point is, is that we've already lost a month, we've already lost another mill. We have 45 people who are out of work, and we just lost a month that they couldn't have worked three months on this one.
And the process, as I understand, Connie, that we have set up in the very beginning is that we're going to do the hearings, we're coming back, we'll decide what's going on on the ballot, and what recommendations we're sending to the county commissioners. It's not my understanding that that motion that we were going to act on immediately, I believe that it was just part of what we, at the end, we will send a complete package to the commissioners of recommendation. We will have a complete package of focus on the ballot. So Rod?
Well, I'd say there's two ways to read the motion. And one is that it either was done as a recommendation at the date of adoption, or we read it within our concept of, at the end, we're going to forward a whole group of recommendations. That one's already passed, though. That's done and over. And so it's either going at the end in August, pretty much from that date, or they have three months from the date of adoption. And I guess, I'm of the opinion that unless folks in Fort Angeles feel that their mills are so secure, they don't even worry about such a discussion, then take all the time in one. The West End can tell you how that works.
Well, I would say that you need to, they'll need to put that on the agenda for the next meeting, because it was not clear to me that, that we were required to issue that.
My understanding was it was going to be over at that time, because we had taken that action.
Well, there was nothing on the action that told us when we needed to send that. As I say, I construed it to be that was something, and then we had a complete package to send all the recommendations. So, do you have a consensus? Do you want to have that as an item for discussion? We can't discuss it today, because it's not on the agenda. We would need to make an agenda item.
I have a question. I mean, I think the topic's, you know, of great importance to the county. But I gotta be honest, I'm failing to see how it fits within the responsibilities that we have for reviewing the charter. I mean, I might not just be seeing it, but maybe somebody in it today would follow our scope of responsibility. I don't see how that fits the charter.
I'm just feeling that because this is not an item, and it's a special meeting, this is not an item that was listed on the agenda, I'm feeling like we need to define the time when we'll discuss it, and we would put it on the agenda, because it is not appropriate that we have that.
That doesn't change my question. I'm not sure why.
But it's all part of the discussion.
But I do, I do think the fact is, we passed a motion.
We did.
By a majority. And so the issue now is, when does it go? So not, not a motion to consider, that's way past. So I think if we want to have that discussion, we need to put it on the agenda, ask the executive committee to look at it. That's, I think, the best way to figure out how to get it on the agenda.
So I was hearing that you would like that on the next meeting's agenda.
Yes, I would. So if I may, next meeting is a special meeting, because it's not your regular meeting date. So you can only discuss whatever you decide to put on that agenda, and nothing more.
That's right.
Can we have the executive board look at it and pass it on to the county commissioners? It wasn't the executive board to accept it. We recommended that it go to commissioners.
I want it to be a commission decision. I don't believe that's an executive committee decision.
I thought we already made that decision.
You made the decision to send it to commissioners, there was no defined timeline on when that had to go. That needs to be a commission decision, not an executive committee. So I'd be happy to put it on the agenda for the next. The next meeting is a special meeting, but if it's on the agenda, we can discuss it. So I'd be happy to put it on the agenda for our next hearing. Okay?
Other questions? In response to Ken's concern, and that's why when it doesn't fit under the charter, but we get sufficient input from the public, those are the kinds of things that we send to the commissioners, rather than on our charter review. But that's to acknowledge from the public that we have heard and we are responding.
Well, it's my understanding that we forward things to the commissioners to consider. The commissioners have the right to consider revisions of the charter themselves. I thought we should only be forwarding things that would be revisions to the charter, but it seemed, and this seems to me to be a totally different kind of issue, but, so I don't, I'm just, I just worry about wasting our time.
This can all be part of discussion on the agenda next meeting. Ron?
Whether we've wasted our time or not, it's already been motioned, if there's a vote.
Other items for the good of the order, the questions, to Noah?
Yes, I had the concern about the prosecuting attorney, and we were given specific guidance that we had to, as a group, submit to them, but now they're telling us, we, even if we submit to them, we're not getting a response indefinitely.
No, no, we, we had, I'd be happy, again, to put that on the agenda for the next meeting to have the prosecutor come.
And give us a specific.
As to update what he is doing.
Thank you.
All right. So the upcoming hearing agenda, it will be a special meeting, but we will have on the agenda, discussion of the timeline for submitting the motion that's already been asked about recommendation to the commissioner, and we will make a request for the county prosecutor to come and update us on the questions we have submitted to him.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anything else? Mike?
So just note, for people that came from west of Squim, if you take a few minutes and go by the plaza on the new city hall, you'll see a rather elegant totem. And so to, the mayor was here, Councilman Hayes, Miller, Dubois, congratulations on a great green, practical city hall, and a great piece of art on your, it's what, 32 feet tall, where they make the totem?
Okay, the question is, when is our next meeting? Our next meeting is the last of our triad of public hearings, it'll be June 20, I gotta get my glasses on. June 29. And Fort Angeles. It'll start at 6:30. At 4:30, the league will have their final presentation by Lindsay Schwarm Warren, the civil, the attorney on constitutional law, explaining how does the charter fit. And any of you, and that will be held in the same room, in the Board of Commissioners. So if any of you have not heard that presentation, it's really well done. They had a good turnout here in Squim tonight, so listen to your presentation. Okay, any other for the good of the order, and then we'll adjourn. Ron?
I'm motion to adjourn.
Second.
Not debatable, we are adjourned.